I said, what I said once is that those students, the youth staff, those students who do these sports. So, we understand their company. And I'm here for my own thing. Trying to hear myself. And that's my personal opinion. So, I'm here, you're right. It's very important to me. And I worked for four months in the U.S. Union as it. I had a personal experience with a good amount of harm. And, and I had a sister who was also here to die by suicide from the overwhelming pressures of the position. So, I am very, very much invested in this. I spent the last six months researching and just trying to figure out how to make things better. And it was certainly not all. And everyone screaming the same thing. And, yeah, so it was, I just wanted to get that powerful message across and how important this actually is. And there are, in my research that I have done, there is so many great things in the pipeline. We just have to...
They're like, what's law?
Yes, we just have to pull at them. There's, and a lot of it, you know, is obviously funding. It was just so impactful to me that I was like, after I shattered, that's why I was like, this is so important, like, we need this. So, I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that. I'm watching color now. But to get to this point, we have to put a lot of work. And I just feel like there are small little things that we can learn and teach others so that they don't get to where I was at. So, it's, yeah. And, yeah. It's just, like, happening. I don't know. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys listening to me. And I feel very, I literally had nothing left to give to my students. I just believe it's been a year and I was like, I just, I didn't do it. It was just on my own courage. But I've worked myself, I've done all of that.
picks to anyone. It's a public process. We're required to do this publicly. I mean, my thought would be that tonight, we've received the materials, we should be able to make that, that choice for the remaining nine candidates, whether it's we go through each name and just vote them up or down, whether we want them to come to a, have an interview, or if we want to, each member gives their top, gives the two or three, I guess, that they'd want to see included. And then we can see how many that gives us. You know, for a Saturday interviewing session, more than six, I think would be untenable. So I mean, in my mind, as I was looking at this, I thought I have three additional candidates that I would like to be able to talk to about the, the position. But it would be, you know, each member has the opportunity to make their own choice.
Okay, Ms. Martin, if I understand clearly, or maybe try to simplify it, with your initial motion, maybe we can do a motion to interview the three internal candidates on the 24th, and we go take a vote on that one. Then afterward, you would have another motion, or to discuss the process first, how we want to invite, we have to agree, we have to agree, maybe select two or three external candidates, and we can discuss how are we going to select those two or three during this meeting?
So the, what you're recommending is that we use one vote down for the three?
Yes. Okay, thank you. Okay, go with the original one. Ms. Chen?
I just want to clarify on, so the three candidates that Ms. Martin, internal candidates, okay?
Okay. Motion by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Dougherty. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi? Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Do we have Mr. Lay on Zoom with audio? If you're a member of the audience, please refrain from speaking. Thank you. Madam Secretary, please.
Mr. Lay?
We are unable to hear. Madam Secretary, maybe...
He did say yes.
I know, but I really, I need to get this.
Can we put the microphone close to?
It is, I don't know. Can you hear us, Mr. Lay?
Yeah, I could. Sure, yeah.
Was it a yes, Mr. Lay?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yays.
With that motion completed, now we can discuss the process of how we want to approach with the external candidates. Ms. Dougherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I was thinking, I would like to put forward a candidate and see if, you know, if they could, if we get four votes, then that candidate would be invited back for an interview. That's, I mean, that's how I would approach it.
That's fine.
So I, I would make a motion that we ask Maureen Benida to come on the 24th and interview.
Maybe just to make it efficient, does any other member have any other candidates, external candidates in mind that they would want to bring forward?
We're going to go through each one.
You're going to do all, all nine external candidates?
Up or down on each one.
Is that the wish of the body?
Yes.
Good motion.
I'm putting Ms...
So why don't we have, instead of taking a vote, a motion on each individual candidate, why don't we have a motion to vote down the list one by one of every nine external candidates? Motion by Ms. Dougherty, second by Ms. Martin. The motion to go through each candidate one by one and to vote on the, inviting them to come to the interview. And once we reach, do we have, do we have a numbers in mind? I mean, in theory, we could all vote yes to all nine external candidates. Do we have like a limit of how many external candidates we want to invite? And when we reach that, that number, we will stop? Or do you want to go through all nine candidates?
I do think if we go through all nine candidates in this, in order, you know, basically in the order that they applied, then if, we will be able to see what that final number is and make a determination if we need to do another pass to further winnow down the numbers.
Okay. Vote by, a motion by Ms. Dougherty, second by Ms. Martin, on favor of the eye, post they know the eyes have it. Motion is carried. We'll have Madam Secretary read the candidate's name, and then she will do a roll call.
Maureen Benida? Ms. Chin?
It is a roll call, Ms. Chen.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Mia Chow?
Present.
Five yays, one nay, one present. Number two. Larissa Dougherty?
Roll call please.
Ms. Chin?
No.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Mia Chow?
Present.
Three yays, four nays, one present. Marcel Gores. Ms. Chin?
No.
Mr. Rossi?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
Madam Secretary, what name are we talking about this time?
Marisol Gores.
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Present.
One yay, five nays, one present. John Gould. Ms. Chin?
No.
Mr. Rossi?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Mia Chow?
Present.
Six nays, one present. Kevin McCaskill. Ms. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Present.
Five yays, one nay, one present. Kimberly Organic. Ms. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Mia Chow?
Present.
One yay, five days, one present. Janelle Pearson Campbell. Ms. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Mia Chow?
Present.
Five yays, one present, one, one nay. Anthony Pope. Ms. Chin?
No.
Mr. Rossi?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Mia Chow?
Present.
Six nays, one present. Arthur Stellar. Ms. Chin?
No.
Mr. Rossi?
No.
Ms. Dougherty?
No.
Mr. Lay?
No.
Ms. Martin?
No.
Ms. Thompson?
No.
Ms., Mia Chow?
Present.
Six nays, one present. That concludes the candidates.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Just for clarity, and everybody's on the same page, Madam Secretary, for each external candidate, we just took a roll call vote on, can you provide us the number of yays and nays, go down the line?
Sure. For the internal, you want, okay, just the external.
Correct.
Okay, for Maureen Benida, you have six yays and one nay, I'm sorry, five yays, one nay, one present. For Larissa Dougherty, you have three yays, three nays, one present. For Marcel Gores, you have one yay, five nays, one present. For John Gould, you have six nays, one present. For Kevin McCaskill, you have five yays, one nay, one present. For Kimberly Organic, you have one yay, five days, one present. For Janelle Pearson Campbell, you have five yays, one nay, one present. For Anthony Pope, you have six nays, one present. And for Arthur Stellar, you have six nays, one present.
Okay, for the committee members, one candidate has three yays, one has three, one, two has five. So, but in terms of four and over yays, you have three candidates. Ms. Benida has six, Mr. McCaskill has five, Ms. Campbell has five. So you end up with having three external candidates that have a lot of yays that could potentially be eligible to come for the interview. What would be the wish of the body? To invite all three or just, invite all three? Okay, need a motion to invite the, the top three to be invited to the interview? Need a motion? Motion by Ms. Dougherty, second by Ms. Martin.
And that's also on the 24th?
On, on, on the 24th after, okay. Madam Secretary, roll call please.
Ms. Chin?
Yes.
Ms. Chin?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Seven yays, approved.
Ms. Martin?
If I could, just to, as Dr. Hall is arranging the, the interviews, there may be people who have a conflict. So I, I just don't want us to have to wait until two weeks to, if we need to schedule another night. I agree with Ms. Dougherty. The best case scenario would be to get everyone through on that Saturday, but people do have lives. So if there is, you know, if someone does have a conflict, I, I would recommend that we be pulled for another, for another evening if we do have to, just to give you that flexibility as you're trying to schedule it.
In scheduling, is it all right to start at eight, or do you want to start at 9:00 AM? And how many, how, how much segmenting do you want?
I would definitely say 9:00 AM if eight is the other option.
Would the school committee or the school administration be able to provide breakfast and lunch? Are you all set, Ms. Martin? Okay, Ms. Chen?
If things come up, can we do it hybrid? Would that be another option?
I understand that Wi-Fi may be an issue, but we could look into that, explore that option. Okay. Mr. Rossi, did you raise your hand earlier? Okay, Ms. Dougherty?
I would recommend that we try to do it in person, everyone be here. And I would also ask that we look at maybe our, you know, 45-minute interview with a 15-minute break between each one.
I, I agree. I think everybody should be here in person and with the, the break, the recess in between.
Does that sound like enough time for an interview? 45 minutes with a 15-minute buffer between the next one?
It's going to be a big day.
Okay. Yeah, so we could do like nine to 12, do three, break, and then do one to four.
Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Just, just a couple of things. One is that we request that the candidates be present. And the second, be present in person, not, not through Zoom. And the second, Madam Secretary made an important point in terms of, you could explain that?
I just suggested that if in fact there was a candidate that can't make that night and he has to be interviewed on a different night, that it should be filmed, but not broadcast until after the, like, if it was by chance before the other candidates, after they go through that interview, so they're not privy to questions before.
I agree.
Excellent point, Madam Secretary. Thank you.
If no other, any other comments or questions? Here none, need a motion?
Go ahead, Mr. Lay.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you. Is what Ms. Martin referring to, the Saturday of the 17th?
It's 24th.
24th.
9:00 AM, the 24th. Are you all set? Mr. Lay?
Could you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
I can hear you.
My question is the, the time of the interview, the day of the interview that Ms. Martin referred to, was it on the 17th of, of June?
It is the 24th, beginning at 9:00 AM.
24, okay.
If there are no other comments or questions, need a motion adjourned by Mr. Rossi, second by Ms. Thompson, on favor of the eye, post they know the eyes have it. Motion is passed. Thank you, everyone, for watching tonight. Have a great night.